Welcome to the Short Term Rental Workshop of the South Haven City Council. Today is Monday, February 17, 2025. This meeting is called to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Mary Hosley.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Annie Brown.
Here. Is there a motion to excuse Letitia Wilkins?
Make a motion to excuse Councilmember Wilkins.
So is she coming late because I?
She's coming a little late, so she thinks she'll be here around 5:45.
Okay.
Do we need an excuse for a workshop because a workshop isn't mandatory? The only reason I ask is I had tried to excuse someone in Planning Commission and was told it wasn't necessary.
It's however this board wants to handle it if you want to excuse her, but I think she's coming here just a little bit late.
So I couldn't hear you. Is she excused or?
Well, there's a motion to excuse.
Okay.
I just want to let you know that I've been in communication with her. She's just running late, so.
Okay.
She intends to be here by 5:45, so if you want to excuse her for that amount of time or if they're.
She'll just be late. Okay. It is now time for public comment.
Hi, I'm Mike Neese. I live at 509 Fruit Street, registered voter in Ward II, and a former Planning Commissioner. I have seen firsthand how our community debated STRs in a binary either-or matter. And it may not have produced the best balanced ordinance as evidenced by us meeting here again. Today I propose we take a look at a structured data-driven approach such as Cephaltrigo Decision Analysis or FORD's A.D. model to guide our short-term rental policy. This model starts by establishing first weighted criteria by which like economic impact, neighborhood character, social capital, housing, affordability, whatever criteria the council comes up with. And based on, excuse me, then each potential policy is compared back to the weighted criteria. Now weighted criteria is an important part of this. You can't have everything. Everything's not equal. You know, I want a luxury car, but I only want to spend $13,000. Something's going to give, right? Something's going to be more important. So you need to find your most important, your most important criteria, then weigh the other alternatives relative or the other criteria relative to that 10. Once that's done, now you can consider any policy that you may look at adopting back against those criteria to find which best meets that criteria. In essence, you're taking a big decision, breaking it down into a manageable bunch of small decisions, data-driven. Moreover, you don't stop at that. We should also be looking into the future. The second part of it is planning or planning and anticipating and preventing potential problems. So you look forward and say, if we do institute this, what could happen? What could go wrong? What actions could we take up front to eliminate, prevent those from happening? And if not, what are our contingencies if they do? In short, and again, this is my two-minute version of it. That's why I'm talking quickly.
Your time is up.
That's what I thought. I'll see you at 7:00.
Hi, Amanda Sukop, 45, Chippewa Court. I agree with Mike. And we didn't always agree on stuff, but I agree with Mike on this. Data-driven is an excellent approach to this. Couple of questions that I would like for you guys to talk about as you're working through this workshop. Would you agree that the current permitted STRs are lawful non-conforming uses? Because I have a real hard time reading this, understanding what you consider to be lawful non-conforming uses and unlawful non-conforming uses. And I have a planning background, and I've been on Planning Commission. And it seems like if people that have been on Planning Commission before are having a hard time understanding this, that it's going to be very difficult for people who haven't. The other thing that I'd just like to quickly discuss are consequences. There are consequences to zoning. And sometimes there are negative consequences, sometimes there's positive. But you gotta, I mean, I would hope that you think through this. I recently went to Alaska, and we're driving through the countryside. It's beautiful countryside, but there's all these little houses or some of them big houses, but they aren't finished. They don't have siding. They don't have, you know, there's something about them. It's not finished. And I was talking, I said, all these poor people, they can't finish their houses. You know, how dreadful to put all this money into this and not be able to finish it. And the driver started laughing at me. He said, we passed a law that we would not tax people until they finish their home to get people to move here. Well, what a great idea. We're not going to tax you, Jeff, until you finish building your house. You're paying rent somewhere, so we're not going to tax you. Well, nobody finished their houses. And it's still a law in Alaska.
Your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consequences.
If you just walked in, this is public comment, and you have two minutes to speak.
Hello. My name's James Oakley. My wife and I own the home at 300 Erie Street here in town. I'm the president. I'm an organization called the South Haven Property Rights Coalition. We have about 87 members, all of whom have contributed in funds and signed on to financially support property rights for short-term rental owners in this city. And so I'll be talking a little bit more at the meeting tonight. I've had a chance to review the ordinance, and we have some significant concerns with it in terms of its impact on the rights of our ownership, particularly as it relates to occupancy requirements being reduced significantly. And the impact of that will be felt immediately and impacts the vested rights that these folks have. And I think the board understands that. And I think the board recognizes that that creates a significant risk, not just because our organization will likely be required to take legal action, but also because there will be others that will do so. And I think that proceeding in the face of that risk is likely to impose significant costs on the city and significant risk of very large damage awards. And so I'll go into my background a little bit more later, but we've retained, as the city knows, Council of Varnum to help us as well and to help protect our rights. I'm also an attorney. Been practicing law for 21 years. I handle litigation all over the country, including cases like these. I'm licensed in Illinois, Michigan, also in Wisconsin. And so, like I said, I'll address it a bit later, but I think the board is proceeding in a very risky manner if it decides to adopt this ordinance.
Anybody else? If not, we will move on. Next, the city council will review and be asked to review drafts of proposed short-term rental ordinances from Short Term Rental Work Group. Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, we're here to talk about the ordinances that the STR work group has put together. I know that we've given these items to you on Friday and hope that you've had time to go over them. Between myself, Kelly, and Dave, we're here to kind of discuss what these ordinance say. It might be better if we kind of give you a high-level view and then maybe go into subsections. I'm just looking for what council would like to see is, do you want to have that high-level view and then go into the individual sections? Does that sound right?
Good.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to ask Attorney Eberly to kind of go over the high level of what we're talking about here, and then we can go through those individualized sections.
If I could, will you be referencing the memo at all? If you are, could it be displayed?
Yeah, I can try to do that.
Because I know some people were trying to get online to get it, and the system was not letting them download the updated document, so they don't have your updated memo from Saturday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Dave.
So if it's okay with council, I'll just follow the outline of the memo that Councilmember Hosley mentioned. I think that gives us a good framework for doing the highlights, the overview. And then we'll move on from there to any specific questions council might have, if that's okay with council. I'll try not to just reiterate the entire memo. So let's talk zoning first. Big picture, what the new ordinance or proposed ordinance does is it creates a short-term rental overlay district in which any new short-term rental would have to be located. Now, which begs the question, well, what about the short-term rentals outside of the overlay district? And those would be, if they're a lawful non-conforming use, they would be allowed to continue provided they don't exceed the scope of what is lawful non-conforming. They would still be required to get a license, depending on if they were, what had previously been called a personal or business STR, they could get a Class 1 or Class 2 license, and we'll talk about those a little bit later. But the question of what is a lawful non-conforming use is inherently a very fact-specific one. The group had discussed, do we put in all the factors that should be looked at to determine whether or not a use is lawful non-conforming? And I think there was, it's fair to say there was some disagreement within the group about what to do there. My opinion on the matter is that because it is such a fact-specific determination, if you put in the, if you put in factors, you risk being either under-inclusive or over-inclusive. And when you do that, members of the public or whoever may look at that and say, oh, I'm looking at this list, and they don't meet the requirements of this list. And now that puts the zoning administrator in the position of saying, well, you know, under state law, was the use established? Was there a vested right under an old ordinance, you know, at the time the use was created? And if you, again, if you put all those factors in, it might not take into account everything. So I appreciate the fact that it may be more helpful for some to have a checklist, but from a legal perspective, I think that sets you up for failure. The compromise we reached was that, understanding that some clear factors are helpful, is to say, look, we're not going to put what qualifies you as a lawful non-conforming use in the ordinance, because that's largely, again, driven by state law and the facts of the specific matter. But staff, as part of the application process and the FAQs for this program, what have you, will put together a list and say, hey, look, this is generally what we're looking at. This is what the zoning administrator is going to look at to make that determination. And by doing it that way, you kind of telegraph to the community, this is what we're going to be looking at. And everybody has a general understanding of what staff will be looking at, specifically the zoning administrator in making that determination. But you're not tying yourself to some criteria that may or may not satisfy the requirements of state law. Similar to the issue of lawful non-conforming is the issue of abandonment. Abandonment requires that the use not have, you know, has ceased for a period of time. But it's intent. It comes down to the intent. Was there intent to abandon that use? And much has been said about, well, if they didn't have a rental certificate for a year or registration for a year, that's abandoned. It's like, that's not necessarily true. There could be a lot of reasons they didn't have a rental certificate. Now, it's relevant information to the determination of whether or not there was intent to abandon that use. But if for some reason, say, a short-term rental had their current registration revoked, that wouldn't, that would not be evidence necessarily of their intent to abandon the use. They've just failed to comply with licensing requirements and are being penalized for that. So it's a little more nuanced than I think many want to make it out to be. And for that reason, you can't just say, well, if you were not registered or your registered lapse at any time, you've abandoned it. That's not the case. So what this ordinance does is it treats the issue of abandonment, just like it does for lawful non-conforming, like any other uses treated in the zoning ordinance. The zoning administrator has to make a determination. Were you lawful non-conforming? In which case, the burden is on the property owner to prove that. And then if the zoning administrator decides, oh, I believe you had established a lawful non-conforming use, but I believe you abandoned it, then it's on the zoning administrator to prove that. It's assuming we're in court. You know, obviously, when we're just talking about the zoning administrator making the determination, they're going to make the determination. But that's how you treat every other use. So what's going on in this ordinance isn't any different than the process that is used to determine whether or not other uses are lawful non-conforming or whether or not other uses are abandoned. And I think when you put it in that context and recognize that short-term rentals are being asked to play by the same rules of the game as everybody else, it makes it a little easier to understand. To that end, this is paragraph three of the memo or Kate's report. We, the work group discussed, okay, well, how do we want to go about that process? Because as part of the licensing, as you'll see, we want zoning, we want you to, we want the zoning administrator to say, yes, you can do this, or no, you can't do this, before you can apply for a license, kind of like, you know, Station 1 zoning, green light, okay, now move to licensing and get a green light, then you can go ahead. And reviewing the language of the ordinance, there was a zoning permit. But a zoning permit, based off the language of the city's ordinance, largely implied permission to go ahead and do something, like permission to put up a fence or permission to start a new use or something like that. And that's not really what we were getting at. What we really wanted was something that would allow the zoning administrator to look at what had happened and what the current state of things were and to say, does this conform to the current requirements? Or, again, looking at the multitude of factors, is it lawful non-conforming? Was it abandoned? Had they been granted a variance? All those questions that a zoning administrator would look at to see whether or not you are permitted under zoning to continue doing what you're doing. So with that in mind, the work group came up with what we call the zoning compliance determination. And that's exactly what it is. It's someone who wants to apply for a license, realizes they got to get a green light at zoning to be able to go and do that. So they say, hey, zoning administrator, I need a zoning letter or zoning compliance determination. And if it's a new zoning, if it's a new short-term rental, excuse me, under the new zoning ordinance, that person would have to have that short-term rental in the overlay district. They'd have to have special land use. That would be the requirements moving forward. If it's a lawful, if it's somebody outside of the new overlay district claiming that they're lawful non-conforming, okay, show me what, why you believe you're lawful non-conforming. The zoning administrator looks at all that information and makes the determination. Yes, I believe they're lawful non-conforming for these reasons. Furthermore, the scope of their lawful non-conformity is this, because we don't want them to expand the scope of their lawful non-conformity. And then that gets sent over to licensing. But that governs them under the zoning side. And like any other determination or interpretation by a zoning administrator, that could be appealed to the ZBA. So if the short-term rental owner believes that the zoning administrator erred in finding that they had abandoned the use, they can appeal that to the zoning Board of Appeals. And again, this is keeping consistency with how every, you know, what, however, how everything else under your zoning ordinance works. The goal of the, when the work group was working through it, was to say, okay, we have a structure in place. You know, there's state law that we have to follow, but we have a zoning ordinance, and there's procedures baked into that to do these things. So to the extent we can lean on the existing framework, let's do that. Yes, sir?
Can we go back to abandonment for a second? So if a person has a short-term rental license, they sell the home. The new owner does not want it to be a short-term rental. They're living there months, six months, maybe even a year. They did not take the license. They did not want the license. Is it then abandonment, or is even that a gray area?
If Person A owned the home, and they had been using it as a short-term rental and were registered, they sell the home, now the license doesn't transfer, the registration doesn't transfer, but the use does, right? We have lawful non-conforming uses, uses run with the land. And the new property owner starts using it just for their family, is what you're saying?
Yes.
In that case, most likely, that the use has been changed. It's no longer being used as a short-term rental. It would likely be, in that case, considered abandoned. Now, you get into some gray area with the old personal uses, which allowed for, you know, a family to live there for a part of the time and to rent it out for part of a time. So that becomes a little more nuanced. But if the previous use had been along the lines of what had previously been called a business STR, where it was, you know, 24/7, this is a short-term rental, I think that picture's a little bit clearer. But yes, abandonment can be evidenced by a change in use. Because you're saying, I'm intentionally doing something different, and in doing so, I am intentionally abandoning the old use.
And then the other one that we considered in the past abandonment, if the person that owns the short-term rental breaks the rules, and they get the warning, and they get the fine, and it happens a second time and a third time, at some point, we can take the license away. Is that still true or not?
That's, you're referring, I believe you're referring to licensing.
The short-term rental.
Right. So licensing of a short-term rental, that would be on the non-zoning side. That wouldn't be on the zoning side, which is where abandonment and the vested right in the context that has been frequently discussed come into play.
So I'm not a lawyer, so let me make sure I understand it. So in effect, the person who has the vested rights, has a short-term rental license, abuses it, breaks the rules, we take the license away, but they still have vested rights, so at some point, they can get it back?
So vested rights, again, in the context that is being discussed, is use. The zoning use runs with the land and has to be abandoned. The licensing side, regulating the activity, is not a vested right in the way it's being used here. You know, one could argue, I have rights for the duration of the license or something like that. But that's not what we're talking about right here. So if they continually don't, you know, hey, I have my license, I have zoning compliance, I'm okay on the zoning side, and I keep getting my license revoked and revoked and revoked and revoked, that's a fact-specific determination in terms of, okay, are you intending to abandon your use? Or can you simply just not get it together and comply with the licensing requirements? But again, we have to show that they intended to abandon the use. And all those things can be relevant, but to make the argument that they've had their license revoked because they weren't, for example, you know, posting their short-term rental certificate in the window, and they got violated three times, and we revoked their license, likely their response is going to be, I kept renting. Clearly, I didn't intend to abandon my, the use as a short-term rental. I just struggled to comply with your licensing requirement. So they're two completely different things. And while how, whether or not you're licensed may be somewhat relevant to the determination of whether you've intended to abandon your use, it's not very, it's not cut and dry like that. There's much more to it, and you have to, again, look at it and say, okay, they were violated, but did they intend to abandon the use? Or did they just do something because they thought they weren't going to get caught? Did they just do something because, you know, they messed up? You know, what, can we show that they intended to abandon the use?
It is that kind of ambiguity that makes it hard for the city to enforce. And it's hard for, in fairness to short-term rental people, owners, to know exactly what the game rules are, because it is ambiguous, and it sounds like such a gray area. So two out of the three ways of abandonment are gray areas, basically. So it's nothing cut and dry. The only one that's cut and dry, if someone buys it, they don't want it. They don't make it a short-term rental. Even though the land use was there, they're not going to do it. At some point, that is abandonment, it sounds like.
Because it's a change in use.
Yeah.
Right. And again, yeah, it is gray, and that's not the doing of the ordinance, that's the doing of state law. Was it abandoned? Abandonment requires intent. Intent is squishy. And that, again, is why we've leaned, at least in this draft, has leaned on how that determination would be made in any other context, i.e., the zoning administrator collects the information, makes the decision, and anybody with standing to appeal to the ZBA can go ahead and appeal that to the ZBA. And if they get a rule and they don't like there, they can always appeal it to Circuit Court. You know, unfortunately, these things cannot sometimes be made as cut and dry as everyone would like to have them be, like creating a checklist to say, if you meet these criteria, and it's like, that's not the case. That just doesn't work that way. And again, when you put criteria like that in there, you are telegraphing, you know, your zoning administrator's kind of like, well, my ordinance says this. They didn't meet these requirements, but I don't think they abandoned it. What do I do? And you're also telegraphing to the public that these are the only things we care about, and that's not necessarily taking into consideration the nuance of the situation.
So if I, for abandonment, I'll start there.
Okay.
In a previous discussion with Cliff Bloom from the firm, we had talked about the fact that if it was voluntarily demolished, that would be tantamount of giving up the vested right, if the dwelling was voluntarily demolished. And that was in the previous version of the zoning ordinance. And that has not been, that was not carried over. So I would like to discuss that aspect of it. But more importantly, I think there's confusion with regard to lawful non-conforming. So what I have been, the position I have been, or the position I've taken, is that the non-conforming comes into play with the zoning ordinance change, because at that point in time, the lawfully existing short-term rental becomes unlawful. So that's non-conformity, correct? That you're speaking of?
Yeah. If you were a short-term rental, so in the new zoning ordinance, short-term rentals are only permitted in the new overlay district. So if you're a short-term rental outside of that district, and you were lawfully established at the time, previously, yeah, you would be lawful non-conforming.
Right. So the zoning compliance determination would be compliance with the zoning ordinance that's ineffective today?
It would decide whether or not you are, I believe the language is, in compliance with the current requirements, have been granted a variance, or are lawful non-conforming.
So what do you mean by current?
Are you, do you have a special land use, and are you in the overlay district?
And so how, and I think that is where there is too much wiggle room and why it wasn't really a checklist. So I think that was a mischaracterization. Because the current zoning ordinance is being proposed to be repealed, the recommendation, and first, I guess, for, you know, ground rules. So what we discussed in our meetings, is it permissible for me to raise suggested changes that I had made? You know, suggestions that I had provided for amendment purposes?
From a legal perspective, provided you don't violate any attorney-client.
Right. Just what I requested.
Issue, yeah. I think now I would, I think there is, from, yes, that's the hard line legally. I think there was a caution in terms of, there were very candid conversations, and, you know, once the Pandora's Box gets opened, Pandora's Box gets opened.
And that is why I'm asking, because I feel strapped in that I cannot advocate for what I had advocated for fear of being accused of violating something. But how can we have a discussion if you are saying checklists were requested, and what I requested was not a checklist?
I made no specific reference to what you guys had, you know, in previous versions, there'd been more of a checklist. But if the council member wants to advocate for an amendment, I think she's entitled to do that. I don't, again, you could do that by referring back to any previous discussion with a work group, or you could do it by not referring back to a previous discussion of a work group.
So I don't want, so the zoning compliance determination in the zoning ordinance did not provide for unlawful determination. So it has a bias that all uses are permissible, or a variance was granted. And so if, if the, and the thing is, you, for zoning compliance, to truly address whether something was lawfully existing at the time the ordinance was amended in order to be lawfully, lawfully non-conforming, it had to be lawfully existing. And that was the whole purpose behind the zoning compliance determination. But that zoning compliance determination needs to be based on our current ordinances that are going to be repealed. And it's my understanding, if it's repealed, then you cannot rely on it. And so I would like to see clarification that the zoning compliance determination of existing short-term rentals are based on our current ordinances, which they were obligated to comply with in order to be lawfully existing.
So is there a question there?
No, that's what I'm just saying, is that I think clarification is needed, because, and what we have said, I mean, what residents have said, and I think city council members have said, is that we don't want this amendment process to blanket all existing short-term rentals as lawfully existing. And so that goes to the question from Amanda Suecup. So as long as they are lawfully existing, as long as everything's been done properly, yes, they would be found lawfully existing. But just because you have a permit, it does not mean it's per se lawfully existing, because if a permit were improperly granted, that doesn't cloak it with lawfulness. That is exactly what your predecessor Cliff had said on more than one occasion, although I think it's, there's a disconnect with what's in the memo. So I think that is something that needs to be resolved, because these amendments are to look for lawfully conforming as of the effective date of this new ordinance, which would require ensuring that they're lawfully existing with the ordinances before this one became, came into effect.
Can I just say one thing? What we're doing is, we are reviewing the drafts of proposed short-term rental ordinances from the short-term rental work group. We're not going back to Cliff Bloom, and we're not going to things that were discussed outside of these meetings.
Well, personal point, personal point of order. First of all, you interrupted me. Second of all, if we are getting inconsistent comments on the exact same subject matter, then we need resolution.
So in that, I think it's important for us to talk about the zoning compliance determination, which is in the ordinance. And I think we need to talk about this, the idea that you said that there's a prima.
A bias that everything's lawfully existing.
When I read a written determination issued by the zoning administrator, according to the procedures established in this ordinance, that specifies whether, very key term right there, whether a use, structure, or lot complies with the current requirements of this ordinance, comma, has been granted a variance, comma, or is lawful non-conforming. Whether means there is no determination. It's defined whether there has been proof laid down that they currently meet the requirements, if they've previously been granted a variance, or are lawful non-conforming. If they can't meet any of those three, they do not have the ability to rent. Is that correct, Dave?
Yeah, there's, if they don't fall into one of those three buckets, by definition, they're unlawful. So, and again, if I'm misunderstanding, please help me understand. But if the goal is to say, "We want a tool to determine whether or not this use gets a green light at zoning, in consideration of all the relevant facts and applicable legal issues," I believe this language does it. You have a short, again, the short-term rental, is it comply with the current requirements, i.e. has it been granted special land use in the special land use overlay? No, okay. What is the issue there? Is it, is it a, you know, it's on a long, on a non-conforming lot, or something like that? Is the structure non-conforming? Has it been granted a variance? And those two probably aren't going to be overly applicable to the issue at hand. Or three, is it lawful non-conforming? And that gets into the discussion that we had a couple minutes ago, regarding all those, the multitude of factors that the zoning administrator has to test to look at. And if the zoning administrator decides it doesn't meet any of those requirements, then her opinion would be, it's unlawful.
And I just want, well, I'll be looking to amend, but through, and that's under the code, which is, we're not discussing, so I'll hold off on that. But I just, I wanted it to be clear that the lawful non-conforming use means it was lawfully existing under the current ordinance before this ordinance became, came into effect, for the short-term rentals that exist now.
Yeah. And lawful non-conformity, similar to abandonment, is a concept set down in state law. Now, we can tinker around the edges, and we can provide rebuttable presumptions and things like that. But at the end of the day, state law is going to control in terms of, was it, was there a vested right? Was it lawfully established or not? And, you know, there had been this conversation given to, "Okay, well, they were lawfully," again, "they were lawful non-conforming, but they didn't have a rental certificate for a period." That raises the question of abandonment. Yeah, it's a very nuanced analysis, and I'm sure based off, you know, the history and the multiple iterations of ordinances we've had, that it's not going to be an easy task necessarily for the zoning administrator to go through and make those, excuse me, determinations. But...
There actually have only been the ordinances in 2018, which are the main ordinances, and a minor amendment in 2019. There have not been various versions. There's been one with tweaking. And so, again, I'll get into the issues with regard to the lawfully existing as it applies to the code. But the key factor is, it's lawfully existing at the time the laws were changed in order to be non-conforming. And that would be under the current laws, which are stated and clear, and we have our references to ordinances. And those would be the criteria under which, whether it was lawful or not, would be the basis of that determination, correct, in order to be lawfully non-conforming?
Again, the issue of lawful non-conformity is nuanced and fact-specific, but it largely looks at, was the use established sufficient for the property owner to have a vested right? And at the time it was established, did it comply with the zoning requirements of the time?
Which is what I said, which would be the repealed ordinances.
Which was what this would take into account, just like the review of any other lawful non-conforming issue.
So the reference to the current requirements would not negate compliance with the repealed ordinances, because it's at the time of the...
Correct. So if you, yeah, so if you had a law, say, there's a personal short-term rental in the zone, outside of the zoning overlay district, that's seeking a Class II license, and the zoning administrator determines that, at the time you were established as a personal short-term rental, you were, it was all done correctly, and you are lawful non-conforming. The next issue gets to, I think, what you're raising, which is the scope of the lawful non-conformity. So in that letter, the zoning administrator would say, because you're not allowed to expand the scope of a lawful non-conformity. So the zoning administrator would say, "Yeah, they are established lawful non-conforming short-term rental use for these reasons, and the scope of their lawful non-conformity is X." And that would include reference to, they, at the time they were established, were able to rent out for no more than 28 days, and all those other requirements that applied. So that those would still apply moving forward, in the sense that they would be required to maintain compliance with the scope, the established scope of their lawful non-conformity, in addition to any new licensing requirements.
Thank you.
This is number four on Kate's report. Parking, short-term rentals are being called a, they're a new commercial use, so that there was a desire, just like any other use, to specify, well, what are the parking requirements? And the requirements put in there were largely based off residential uses in similar structures, with the understanding that there's a more intensity of a use in a short-term rental. So they were beefed up a little bit in terms of, you know, perhaps requiring an additional one for each bedroom over three, or something like that, or bedroom over two, depending on the structure at hand.
And Dave, just to clarify, because the short-term rental above another commercial use could be confused with a short-term rental above a business in the CBD, and as noted at the start, that two does not apply to the CBD.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying, absolutely. So there's, in the parking, I think it's Article 26, it lays out all the parking requirements. And in his, previously, so prior to this amendment, in the CBD district, there was no requirement for a residential use above a...
For the short-term rental to have a parking spot.
Right. So this is essentially saying, yeah, in the CBD, you don't, these parking requirements wouldn't apply. You just, there's no requirement for parking for your special land use. Okay. Do we want to pause for questions there? Do you want me to move forward and kind of hit the highlights on the licensing ordinance?
Do you have any other questions?
That's licensing.
Okay. Move on.
Okay. And again, I'm just kind of following the outline of the ordinance later. If at the next meeting, we want to talk line by line through the ordinances, we can definitely do that. So licensing, one of the questions, or one of the issues was, okay, we have a bunch of currently registered short-term rentals under an old licensing framework, or old registration framework, if you will. How are we going to transition those to the new licensing framework, understanding that often, short-term rentals, they may take bookings six months in advance, a year in advance, what have you? So the thought was to provide a little bit of, I won't say wiggle room, but having a timeline that took those factors into account. So under the current draft of the licensing ordinance, anybody who is currently registered under the old registration would not be required to get a license for the duration of that registration, which is annually, okay? So if I'm currently registered, I have a good registration, I don't, and I'd say I'm six months in, excuse me, six months into my registration, I don't need to go get a license right away, right? Like, I still have six months left on my registration, and we want to do, account for that. So if you're currently, if you have a current registration, you're allowed to continue to operate. Now, bear in mind, again, that's only an annual registration. As of the effective date of the new ordinance, anybody who has not been currently registered under the old framework would not be permitted to register under the old framework. And anybody who, again, has their current registration, would be able to renew their registration, to give themselves another year. But they could only do that if their registration, their current registration expired within 180 days of the ordinance going into effect. So essentially, because what the fear was, if we say, if we didn't give that 180-day window, or that requirement that your registration had to expire within that 180 days, you could have somebody who just, their registration isn't going to expire anytime soon, and they just want to re-up it because they want to get more time under the old framework. So by doing this, it makes sure that, look, yeah, if you fall into that camp where your registration expires within 180 days of this ordinance going into effect, you can renew your registration, and you get another year on it. But after that, you have to come into the old framework. So the goal was to, again, account for the unique situation that the short-term rentals were in, and also try to move aggressively towards moving everybody over into the new licensing scheme.
Let's let Dave talk, and then you can pause when you're ready for questions.
I can, do you want to, I can take questions after each bullet point? We can take them at the end. I'll defer to counsel.
So you were done with that first bullet point, right?
Yes, yes.
That's what I thought. So my concern with that six-month window is that those rentals in that six-month period continue for a year under the current licensing, which allows different occupancy than under the new. And when we had looked at this before with Cliff, what he had proposed was not enforcing the occupancy for a year, because rental obligations, whatever, you know, contracts, are usually made a year in advance. And so if you happen to be the handful in that six-month period, you got, you could potentially get up to 18 months. So it's up to six months, you know, the 180 days, and then you add a year on to that. So then you've got 18 months under the current one, which allows higher occupancy. But if you have the unfortunate luck of landing on that 181st day, you have to register under the new ordinance, the new occupancy comes into force, you are not, and it's only been six months from the effective date, and now all of a sudden, you have to do occupancy of 12, and, but you had this agreement with the renter over a year ago. And that, I just see an equitable fairness issue between the people in that six-month window and the people after that six-month window.
Was this discussed during the workshop meetings?
There was robust discussion about everything in there, I think, you could say.
Dave, when was this issue brought up in the workshop?
On the, I believe it was the last day of the workshop.
And at what time of the last?
Oh, I have no, I have no idea.
It was at the end of the workshop, correct?
Sure. I'm not, I'm not, I'm trying to say there was lots of discussion on everything.
There was discussion, and I had raised the issue about using Cliff's one-year grace period to do the occupancy, and, because I saw that as being fair. We did discuss this, and it was, and then we, on Friday, we got proposed language, because it hadn't been proposed to us before, had it?
We had a lot of work to do in four weeks, Mary.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is...
And we made a lot of progress, and then we had to come back and reassert some things. So I'm not sure what the purpose is of this line of questioning with Dave. Is it just to say that we need to have more discussion on it, or is this, I mean, what's the purpose here?
It's to address the insinuation that we had a lot of discussion on this. We had very limited discussion, and we had no...
Assertion aside, is there something we can move on with actionable item? Do you have some proposed language we can look at?
So that's why I wrote you this morning and said, "I believe that there are some problems with this section, with this aspect of it. I would like guidance from legal counsel about the language from Cliff and revisiting this, because I do see an equitable fairness issue with it." And I did discuss this specific item with Representative Andrews over the weekend, and also John Lorstorfer, to help me better understand this aspect of it. And that's my concern.
If there's a...
This was a team effort with five people, so Wendy.
During this discussion, was there any concern about sticking with the grace period that had been brought up before?
I'd have to go back, but I also know we talked about moving the effective date of this ordinance as well. That would also build in some additional time. So we were talking about 180 days, but we're also talking about a later-on effectiveness period, because this is a license... So we were, we were talking about 180 days, but we're also talking about a later-on effectiveness period, because this is the licensure portion, not the zoning portion. So we were trying to find something that would meet the needs of maybe existing contracts, but also being, trying to, we're trying to balance a lot of different interests here, but at some point, you do have to put a line in the sand and say, here's when it applies.
And that line could be the 180 days, it could be 365 days. It could, again, that's a, that's a policy choice. To the extent there's concern about fairness in terms of policy, that's for counsel to decide. From legal's perspective, I don't have any objection to the, to the proposed language. To the, Cliff's proposal was, again, as, as Mary had said, to essentially say, you, you come under the new licensing framework, but you get to work, you get to play by the old rules regarding occupancy for a year. And the reason this was chosen, again, I'm not saying there was unanimous agreement on it, or or that everybody had been on board 100%, but the thought is, at least, you know, from my perspective, is that it is easier to say, you play by the old rules for this long, and then you come under the new rules. And when you come under the new rules, you play by all the new rules, as opposed to allowing somebody to have, you know, a foot in both worlds. And that's, that's what this tried to do, was to say, we're going to put a timeline out there. And at some point, like Kate said, there's a line in the sand, and then you have to come and play by the new rules. And importantly, that, that line in the sand in every situation is always after the current expiration of their registration. So we're not picking somebody halfway, six months into a one-year term and saying, you got to come over to the new rules. We're saying, the end of your term, you have to come over to the new rules. But if your term expires within six months of this ordinance, you can go ahead and renew and play under the old rules for another year.
And I had also inquired about the enforcement challenges with having two ordinances that were not identical, applying across the different short-term rentals.
Because we only have an hour, why don't you go ahead, Dave, and go through the whole proposal ordinance, and then we'll have questions at the end.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question, maybe help this issue? What do you think? Mary makes a valid point, you make a valid point, but you're our attorney. What do you think we should do?
The proposed language is, from a legal perspective, I have, I have no objection to it. If the proposal is to incorporate some sort of exemption in the current licensing term, there, I think there's ways to do that, as Cliff had insinuated. Again, I think, my personal opinion is that doing it this way is, is cleaner. You're not letting people play in both worlds. But again, a lot of this comes down, there's a lot of valid legal options. It comes down to the policy choices of, of this body. Does that answer the question?
Hey, this is not one to spend a whole lot of time. And all due respect, Mary, that we have to make a change and go backward. I, I'm not sure it's worth the time and effort to, to change, and I'd rather stick my opinion with what you're recommending.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I'm on number three, which is actually number two. Just got flip-flopped. Under the, which is my fault. Under the new ordinance, there's two classes of licenses. The Class 1 is if you can rent for more than 28 days in a year, and the Class 2 is if you can rent for under 28 days or less. The reason Class 1 and Class 2 was used as opposed to the personal or business was out of the recognition that any short-term rental use is inherent, as we've defined it in our zoning ordinance, is inherently commercial. It's inherently a business. So we wanted to walk away from language that conflated that and tried to muddy that clear line that the new zoning ordinance was drawing. A lot of the discussion around short-term rentals throughout the state has been, is it a commercial use? Is it an accessory use to residential use? Well, the draft says very clearly, it's a commercial use, and I wanted to maintain that consistency throughout the entire framework. And again, which license you qualify for depends on what you're permitted to do under zoning. So under zoning, if you can rent out for the 28, or for more than 28 days, which incidentally corresponds to the old business license, you can get a Class 1 license. So if you are a lawful, non-conforming business STR outside of the overlay district, you, you'd qualify for that Class 1. Anybody moving forward who's in the overlay district and got their special-lane use would be Class 1, frankly, because I don't see the point of trying to restrict yourself to a Class 2, and you're authorized to have it. Class 2 would, incidentally, correspond to those lawful, non-conforming, personal, short-term rentals. So again, as we discussed earlier, and as Mary rightfully pointed out, you can't exceed the scope of your lawful nonconformity, and you have the Class 2 license, which, taking that into account, has certain requirements which mirror what had been in the old ordinance regarding notifying the city in advance of a rental term and, and things like that. One, and one thing I will note on the Class 2, and I, we can ta, we can talk about it later if counsel wants. There had been some thought given to, okay, do we want to allow something analogous to the old personal short-term rentals, you know, everywhere in the city? And the decision was made that that, we have, there's an option for that, but it's probably contentious, so it was removed, because the goal here is to move forward expeditiously. But to the extent a later amendment to the zoning ordinance is done, it's structured in a way that they would get then the Class 2. So it takes into account the potential future modification of this ordinance towards potentially allowing something similar to a personal short-term rental outside the zoning overlay district. Three, the Good Neighbor Guide.
Can I ask a question about that? It's a simple one. Or make a recommendation for Class 2, which we used to call personal.
Joe, your mic. Your mic.
It would be nice to add P R E for all new Class 2 short-term rentals, including any overlay.
I have strong objections to adding the P R E, and I'm happy to get into those now, or we could save those for, do you want to save those for seven o'clock?
Save it for later.
Yeah, okay.
We did talk about that in our workshop.
Well, the contentious part was that it's hard to enforce.
Okay, let Dave move on.
The Good Neighbor Guide. The current ordinance requires a Good Neighbor Guide. The thought here was, the goal of a Good Neighbor Guide is to facilitate the transfer of information. And enforcing the good, at least from legal's perspective, whether or not a Good Neighbor Guide was provided to an individual can be complicated. We could look for it in an inspection, like, okay, we're inspecting your property for every two years, and do you have a Good Neighbor Guide on the table, or something like that? It can prove somewhat difficult. So the thought, well, and we may want to change what we put in a Good Neighbor Guide, right? Things change. So the thought, the compromise, if you will, was to say, okay, we're not going to require a Good Neighbor Guide and bring the hammer down on you if you don't have one. But as part of this administrative process, the city will promulgate a Good Neighbor Guide and highly recommend that it be included in literature for renters. And if I'm a property owner, I'm going to look, these are the things the city wants people to know, so that they don't get parking violations. And the city already did something up with a nice graphic, so I don't have to do that. The city already did this in terms of our beach hours and the rules. And I can just copy and paste this. That sounds like a good idea. So again, it's, understanding the goal is to facilitate information, and we thought the best way to go about that would be in a largely non-punitive manner. Or at least, I'll say, from legal's perspective, it seems that, given the complications with enforcement, I recommend going about it in the non-punitive manner. Complaint reporting. The, the city currently uses, I'm going to, I'm going to mispronounce this every time, Granicus, Granicus?
Yeah.
And concept would be the same. In fact, this ordinance requires that the city manager establish a complaint reporting system. Now, of course, city council will have to fund that, but again, the ordinance is saying, hey, city manager, this needs to be in effect. And it would do the same thing. Hey, if there's a complaint, the owner or the operator, the person responsible for the day-to-day operations of the short-term rental, and we can go into detail more at seven o'clock on what that looks like, has to acknowledge the, the notification once they receive it. Now, it's, it does say acknowledge, and that is the lang, that's the recurrent requirement. Doesn't require that the violation be corrected within 45 minutes, just simply that it be acknowledged. And my concern with requiring that it be corrected is that that assumes that the complaint is valid, and that may not be the case. And how are we going to correct, how are we going to enforce that? We're going to take Person A's word for the, word for it that there was a violation, and then we're going to take Person A's word for it that there was, that the action wasn't corrected within a certain amount of time? From, that raises a whole bunch of enforcement issues. So again, the goal is to, of the Granicus system is to bring about voluntary compliance. I believe the current language does that. It provides a mechanism by which members of the community can contact the owner-operator of a short-term rental and say, hey, this is a problem. And the person has 45 minutes to acknowledge receipt of the notification, which we can easily see on the Granicus system. And if that issue isn't resolved to the plaintiff's satisfaction, they always have the option to file a police report, a code enforcement report, just like any other violation of city ordinance. But again, to require in the ordinance that it be corrected with a certain amount of time inherently relies on the, assumes that the, that the violation being reported was a valid complaint, and that's not always the case. And who, who am I going to put on the stand? You know, like, my officer never went out there. How am I going to prove that? So I think, again, that, and then, and the goal of trying to facilitate non-enforcement types of information flow and compliance, I think the current requirements satisfy that objective. Occupancy. Occupancy under the current draft is based off of compliant bedrooms, and we can discuss largely what those are at the seven o'clock meeting. But compliant, in, in short, is, does it meet all our requirements for safety? Does there egress, is there certain things that we're comfortable with the bedroom being occupied? And it caps it at two occupants per bedroom, and it gives the max occupancy of the, of the short-term rental as 12. As the gentleman said, that 12 is lower than the current requirements. Again, this comes down to a policy issue. Yeah, if you are changing the occupancy requirements, the max occupancy requirements, we're going to have to be able to, to articulate justification for that, and I think there's arguments that can be made as to why. And the reason, at least in the work group, that it was capped at 12 was a, was a concern pertaining to parking in terms of, if we go higher than that, we want to, we're, we have concerns that the parking is going to be too much. So out of, out of all of the ordinance, the occupancy cap is the one that I think for, gives me, not, I won't say cause for concern, but I think it's one worth discussing when we're putting the hard cap on there, and what our reasons for wanting a hard cap on the top, top are. Or, you know, as Kate's memo mentions, we adopt the ordinance, which is the name of the game here, and that's the first topic to be revisited in light of any parking study or something like that. And parking was a hot topic. And it became, two things became clear. One, there's two things pertaining to parking. One is, is the enforcement side, i.e. non-compliance with the current violations. And two is congestion. And as Kate indicated in her report, to, to address the enforcement issue, she'll be putting together a recommendation regarding any changes in the current parking ordinances that are needed, additional staff that is needed, additional funding that is needed in order to increase enforcement of the existing ordinances. As to congestion, again, there's, there was a multitude of opinions. But one, one of those opinions was, this is a thriving beach community with limited parking. And to assume that all the congestion on a street is attributable, attributable to a short-term rental may not be a correct assumption. You know, the argument going, if the short-term renters aren't parking in front of the residence or the short-term rental, a day trip, it will. Somebody's likely going to be in front of those spots. And with that in mind, the recommendation from staff was, get a parking study. Figure out what the actual problem with congestion is, because it's likely that the problem is bigger than short-term rentals. And to ta, try to impose a restriction on parking for short-term rentals, which we, which was, you know, was discussed, staff talked about it. And we couldn't come up with something that we thought was practical and didn't have a lot of legal risk. And I would hate for the city to accept risk unnecessarily and impose something impractical and when it doesn't really solve your problem, which is probably bigger than short-term rentals. So again, the recommendation there was, get a parking study, get recommendations, and the solving, as the problem is likely bigger than short-term rentals, the hunch is the solution will also likely be bigger than short-term rentals. So that's the, the brief overview, the 50,000-foot overview.
I have an hour.
So we got time, so, Mayor, how would you like to proceed?
Okay. George, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no questions or comments.
Jeff, Wendy.
Give me a minute to get my thoughts together, please. Skip me.
Do you want to move on? Mary?
So with parking, you actually have a typographical error, because we were talking about parking over sidewalks, not driveways. And really, the enforcement, I, I'll accept that there were two main issues, enforcement and congestion. But the enforcement issue really was the fact that they're parking over sidewalks because there's insufficient onsite parking. So that's tied to a current zoning requirement under the short-term rental. And I, in talking with Kelly after the meeting concluded, and just she and I, maybe George was in the meeting room still, were talking about parking over the sidewalk. And she had indicated that it's hard to have a full force of parking enforcement. And so, you know, that's where I was like, well, Kate can, you know, find a way that we can come back to city council to provide sufficient funds to ensure seasonal parking enforcement people are there, and they can go through the neighborhoods earlier in the morning to identify cars that are parked over the neighborhood. Because earlier in the morning, most likely, it's not going to be delivery, it's not going to be construction. And you're really obstructing, obstructing the easy walkability for people with strollers, canes, crutches. And that's, that's the crux of it, is not blocking the sidewalks, which is a pretty universal, I think, probably law throughout many, many jurisdictions. And also, when the police have downtime, especially in the wee morning hours, you know, they can go through and ticket people, and that would give us very objective data of when there are violations, or if there are no violations, of parking over the sidewalk. And if that does appear to be a consistent problem, if it's consistently and uniformly applied, that would really go far, I think, in helping us with the next steps. And that is some common sense, very easy, relatively speaking, ways to address the parking issue that tends to be, that, that tends to cause a lot of issues. And I, I just say that because I've walked around the south end of Ward 1 on an early Saturday morning, and routinely, I would have to walk into the street because cars were blocking the sidewalk, and mainly at larger short-term rental dwelling units. So that would give us the data that we would need to address the parking issue with hopefully minimal expense. And that, I mean, that, that was, that is one common sense recommendation that I would like to see. With regard to occupancy, you know, New Buffalo, I thi, and also with personal short-term rentals, enforcement issues. I would like to see a way that we could address occupancy without having it abused. So New Buffalo has a, an STR summary that has to be submitted before every rental term. I see a, I could envision a much less onerous process here in that if code enforcement or Granicus or the police are called to an. or Granicus or the police are called to a dwelling unit, short-term rental dwelling unit, they could request a copy of the contract that would have all the information of occupancy, age, you would know whether it was compliant with the current zoning ordinance or not. And they would just have to produce it, and the operator could produce it if there were a problem, and that could resolve it. I would like to see a way to address occupancy where it's more welcoming to families. And I have discussed with many people about changes of the, the age that would be counted towards occupancy, but that's also an enforcement nightmare. So I welcome, from short-term rental management companies and owners, how we can move forward to find an occupancy that keeps the occupancy within our normal family sizes, because these are commercial uses in our residential districts, but welcoming to families with children and grandchildren. And I think that's where you start to get into the problem, where you have your grandparents, and then you have their immediate offspring, and if their offspring has two, three, or four children, you quickly increase occupancy. And how can we accommodate those larger families who tend to have more residential outings? And that would be welcoming to the community without negatively affecting our, the micro community around it.
Letitia.
Well, first, I want to say, please excuse me for my tardiness, and I know I'm late, but I, I think you just want my thoughts about this, right?
Yeah.
Well, I know that it's not 100% of what we would like, but I think it hits some major points that we would like, and at this time, I, I think I'm, I approve it. I'm going to go with it. I know there's some small little things that we want to change, but I think those changes could be taken care of up the road. I think we could just discuss it up the road. Because the parking, I understand what you're saying about the parking, and I think the 12 for the capacity, I think that was kind of what we agreed upon.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, those are not issues that I have.
Okay, I thought you had a problem with them.
No, no. I had a, a problem with the way it was presented, in that I had common sense ways to address it.
Okay, gotcha. So again, again, I, I think, you know, I even, I think I read it said, it's 80%, so I would go with the 80%. And I just think that up the road, as a council, that we can, we can make changes up the road. And I don't think that we should keep prolonging this. I mean, we've been working on this too long, and the community needs, they need, they need something, and we need to give them something today.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I just want to make sure for me, and most importantly, for all the residents. So what we have here, put the whole thing together, bottom, bottom line is, there can be no additional Class 1, what we used to call business short-term rentals, no additional ones in any neighborhood added, other than the overlay areas. I see Kate shaking, yes.
Correct. And more than that, there can be no new short-term rentals, full stop, outside of the overlay district. So not just business, there would, there'd be no more of the old personal.
Class 1 and Class 2.
But, yeah, unless they were, again, lawful non-conforming is the, is the exception, but moving forward, no new lawful, no new short-term rental use could be established outside of the overlay district. Yes, sir.
Is, is there a map of the overlay?
Yes.
Yes. It's in, it's hard to see on the packet. I don't know if Kate's pulling it up.
I've put it right up here, and it's going to be outlined in green, so there's really three locations, really. One is going to be this Harbor Club area right up here to the north of the town. The second part is going to be kind of your historic Monroe Park, and then this area right around Dykman, across into the central business district. But I think this omits, like, the R2 areas in the central business, well, not in the central business district, right? That's something different. And then here to the south, south of town, which are the first two phases of the trail side.
Okay.
So that's, that's the extent of the overlay zone, where any new short-term rentals could be located.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's hard to see. We tried many different colors, but it just, we went with lime green.
Wendy?
Thank you. I was just going to say, in regards to the, the occupancy and just in general, I feel like, I know that needs to be tied to the parking congestion or other issues. To me, it's also an issue of the character of our neighborhoods, and having fewer people turning over multiple times a week makes a difference to our quality of life. And I can say that as a person who lives next to a short-term rental and is raising children next to one. And I feel like, I wish that was more embraced as a compromise, because I feel like we have also compromised on our end, and I, I think this is more than fair, and it will make a difference in how our neighborhoods feel, and I think it, it does the job in that way. And then the only other note I had was the Good Neighbor Guide. I get the justifications for making it not a requirement. I do worry that some good information would be missed if anybody decided not to include it in their rental, so I would at least want to, like, put a pin in that to see if it has any negative impacts by not making it a requirement.
It could be as easy as the STR owner puts a QR code, and then they would lead him to a link.
Well, even better, Jeff, we already have our QR code that goes right to it. So we, we're two steps ahead of you.
And part of this, if I may, Mayor, was a recognition of, there are certain things that you want in law, and then as a practical matter, there's, there's a bunch of nice-to-haves. And what, how do we balance that? And in conversations, a lot of this was, okay, like, just like the Neighborhood Guide, we're not comfortable putting it in the law, but it's a nice-to-have, so we're going to put it on as part of the process and the FAQs on the website. Highly, highly recommend that it be included, things like that, to try and, again, information sharing without necessarily having the punitive aspect, because in many cases, one, the punitive aspect is hard to enforce, and two, we, we don't want to be in a position of, on these smaller things where, you know, everybody's reporting their neighbor for something that, you know, frankly, enforcement doesn't have time to address.
Just a quick comment about blocking sidewalks. In our neighborhood, when I visit with people who are visitors and they're blocking the sidewalk, it's frequently because they don't know they can park on the street. So I just say, hey, you probably didn't know, but you can park on the street here, around the corner, anywhere that's convenient.
I would, would just like to add, I have heard that the residents really want to make sure the Good Neighbor Guide is included. It helps people know what the ordinances are. And also, I did hear a few comments that the class licenses, it's very confusing, that the Class 1 is what used to be business short-term rental, and Class 2 is what used to be personal short-term rental. And as I've been saying, is I do not want a personal short-term rental to inadvertently become a business short-term rental, a Class 1, when it didn't have that right now. And that's why I think the zoning compliance determination is very critical, and to have that tied in the zoning, I'm sorry, in the code of ordinances to the repealed laws, because if the law is repealed, I'm concerned that there will be confusion about what criteria are there. And although Kate does believe that we're at 80%, I think there's some, there's a handful of items that need minor tweaks, that without them, there, we will not maintain the character of our neighborhood. So I would like to go through some proposed changes. I don't know if you want that now, or if you want that in the regular session, but, and, and there are some places where there are mays that should be shelled, that really should be, should be shells to ensure that it's compliant. But without those, it's not perfection. It's to, as was alluded to, it's to ensure that we have identified areas where there could be confusion, and we are clarifying those right now to avoid unintended consequences and further erosion of our, character of our neighborhoods. Without these few changes, I, I would be very concerned. Because of how quickly this was rushed through, there were some, like I said, a handful of items that, simply changing a may to a shell, ensuring that the zoning compliance determination is based on the repealed laws, because without reference to them, I'm concerned that the zoning compliance determination will not be accurate, and those items. So when, when would you like to hear those?
Actually, we're talking about the proposed short-term rental ordinances that came from the work group.
Correct.
So you worked as a team, and you came to consensus. And when you come to consensus, not everybody is happy, but you move on.
Well, no personal point of order, Annie. So we worked on it. Items had been identified, and changes were made. And again, this is not perfection, but this is ensuring where may should be shell, it occurs, they, they are very nominal in number, and they could have a significant impact on the execution of the ordinance.
And that was not on the agenda?
This is a workshop for discussion.
Are there any other questions? I think Kate had a comment.
I was just going to say, we're here to talk about these ordinances. Of course, they're on the agenda at the regular meeting. I would suggest that whatever conversation or discussion we want to have, on whatever wants to be brought up, that we just, we acknowledge that at 6:45, we're going to break, have a nice little break between our meetings, so that we can come back here at seven o'clock and get refreshed.
So you're going to let, so Mary should keep talking?
If we're going to hear it now, or we're going to hear it at seven o'clock, we can get some of this out of the way.
Go ahead, we're stopping at 6:45.
Okay, so if the 10-246 continues, I think before registered, you need to insert lawfully. And I had, I believe there's a concern that the 180th day is not covered. It says following, and I believe on or after might be more accurate, to ensure that there's continuity and there's not one day that's missed.
Where are we at, Mary?
Under 10-246, you'd have to look at the zoning ordinance.
Which page is this?
You're in the licensing one, right?
Yep, the licensing one. So that would be page two of the print-off.
Page 65 of the packet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we repeat that?
So there are several references to currently registered, and I would say lawfully would need to be inserted between currently and registered. And I can go in specific details. And then, on the 180th day, it says following, and I believe, and it's, and then it says prior to the 180th day, it doesn't say what happens if it's on the 180th day. So in the second sentence, it should say, as opposed to following, on or after the effective date, so that the 180th day is covered.
Isn't that already covered by the, the actual language, which states, no dwelling unit currently registered under this article may be reregistered following the expiration of the 180th day. So that, in my mind, says that on the, at the end of the 180th day, anything prior to that or that day included applies to that section.
Okay. Oops, sorry. For Article 3, Section 14, 501, I didn't, and this goes to the confusion that people don't, people were not following that the business short-term rentals and the personal short-term rentals would all become short-term rental. In light of tonight's discussion, I don't know if clarity is needed, but that was my concern, is that with the licensing, they don't know where the business and personal go.
What do you mean by that?
Well, no, so do, and, so once the current ordinances are repealed, where, where do what is currently business and personal, how are they defined?
Okay, I think I understand what you're getting at.
And so I didn't know if maybe there should be an addition at the end of the definition of short-term rental, that short-term rental encompasses those dwelling units that were previously identified as short-term dwelling unit, short-term rental business dwelling unit, and short-term rental personal dwelling unit. So they know they all are encompassed within that meaning, because if that ordinance is getting repealed...
So I, I think I understand what you're getting at. I'm on page 69 of the packet. This is amendment to Section 14, 50, versus the new Section 14, 504, License Types and Eligibility, talking about who's eligible for what license. And this is tied to, and I'll read it for every one of the audience. Is it up there?
I think so.
I'll read it anyway. Dwelling units that comply with the requirements of this article, and that may lawfully be rented or leased for more than 28 days in a calendar year, under the zoning ordinance, are eligible for a Class 1 license. So what that gets at it, if you have a zoning letter of compliance that says that you're able to rent for more than 28 days out of the year, then you're eligible for a Class 1. Similarly, dwelling units that comply with the requirements of this article, and that may lawfully only be rented or leased for not more than a total of 28 days in a calendar year, under the zoning ordinance, are eligible for a Class 2 license. So if the zoning administrator says, hey, you are a lawful, non-conforming, short-term rental, and the scope of your lawful nonconformity is such that you are able to rent out for no more than 28 days, and no more than six ter, six, six rental terms, you'd only be eligible for a Class 2 license.
Yeah. What I was thinking is that there would be a B put in there, and it says, to obtain a license as provided here, and a Class 1 license shall only be granted to an applicant where the applicant has, at the effective date of this ordinance, a lawful registration as a business short-term rental under ordinances 1044, 1045, 1047, and 1048, which are now repealed, or has obtained a favorable decision for a special land use as provided in this ordinance, and similar for, for personal.
And so if I'm understanding correctly, what you're trying to say is, if, if you were, under the old zoning ordinance, or the current zoning ordinance...
Right.
If you were a business short-term rental, you're not eligible for a Class 2, or Class 1 license unless you had a currently valid registration. Well, okay. And I think what that is, was doing, if I'm understanding correctly, is saying, you're only able to get this license if you, again, currently had the old license, but that doesn't take into account the whole zoning issue, the use, the law, have they abandoned the use? Because you could have a previous, or, you know, current business STR that, for whatever reason, you know, grandma died or whatnot, they haven't renewed the registration, and it's been two weeks, and they fully intend to get a new registration and continue being a business STR. But by imposing that requirement, you would be saying, sorry, Chuck, you're only allowed to get the Class 2 STR. Now, practically, the, the class regulations in here, we don't address the duration, you know, the 28 days or not, because that's all covered under zoning anyway. But I guess I struggle with how that's fully recognizing that they are, in fact, a lawful, nonconforming use, and then saying you can't get the certain license.
I just am very concerned that personal short-term, people with personal short-term licenses are somehow going to get a business short-term license.
So under that, the, and Kelly could speak to this more, but she's going to review it and say, well, what are you allowed to do under the zoning? Were you a personal STR? Were you a business STR? What was the scope of that use? Are you lawful, nonconforming? Has it been abandoned or whatnot? And that determine, and that'll all go into her determination, and the license... and the licensing person will look at it and say, well, zoning says you're not authorized to rent for more than 28 days because you were, we all know, because you were a personal STR. Therefore, you're only eligible for a Class 2 license. Does that satisfy the concern? Okay.
I think so, yep.
And again, it'll be written down, so it'll be very clear.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. Page 67 of the Agenda Packet, 14, 502 A and B. It says, no owner may rent, lease, or advertise. And B says, no owner, operator may rent, lease. I think those may should be shells, to make it clear that they cannot do that. As opposed to may.
This is largely a, I would say, a stylistic question.
Well, no, shall is mandatory, may is discretionary.
So in this context, you, if you, no owner may do this, you are, i.e. you are not permitted to do this. Shall is often, is mandatory, but it's often used in the sense of conveying a duty. And there's not a duty being conveyed here. So again, I have, I think it's a stylistic issue, but I'm not gonna object on the basis of a stylistic issue.
Yeah, and similarly, in 14, 503 C, it has no dwelling unit may be issued a letter of compliance. I think it's more appropriate to say, no letter of compliance shall issue unless the dwelling unit has been issued a zoning compliance determination. And this is where I would like that the zoning compliance determination is based on compliance with requirements existing before the effective date of the ordinance through the now repealed ordinances 1044, 45, 47, and 48. I'm very, I just, I want to make sure that those requirements are what are used to determine zoning compliance for the existing short-term rentals.
What other requirements are you concerned will be used?
It's just when, because the beginning of the... Item. There we go. It says it's not intent, under the scope, it's not intended by this ordinance to repeal, abrogate, annul, or in any way impair or interfere with existing provisions of the other laws or ordinances, except those specifically repealed. So I don't want that to infer that there's any change in obligation.
So that language is not, is existing language. And essentially, what that means is we're not intending to effectuate a change unless we specifically say so here. And how we specifically say so is if we repeal something. But again, when the zoning administrator is making her determination of what was lawful, non-conforming, she looks to those zoning ordinances that were in effect at the time the use was established.
Okay, thank you.
And, excuse me, and we're not making changes just because one person on the council wants them?
So, well, if I move to amend, we'll have to address that. But so the wording that you used for the fireworks is different than what the current wording is. The current wording is, no fireworks shall be used on the premises of a dwelling unit registered under this ordinance when it is occupied by anyone other than the owner. The language you use is, the use of fireworks without the licensee being present on-site is prohibited. I believe, that is ripe for abuse by someone shooting off fireworks, people, you know, the police responding, and then saying, oh, sorry, the licensee just left. And so I would propose that the language be much more similar to what it is. And a suggestion is, the use of fireworks is prohibited on any property during the renting or leasing of a dwelling unit on said property as a short-term rental.
So the current requirement reads, when being rented or leased, the use of fireworks without the licensee being present on-site is prohibited.
But the way it is worded is when it's occupied by the owner. And so being present and occupying are different. And so if it's being used as a short-term rental by an occupant, fireworks are not to be used. Fireworks are only allowed when it's not being used as a short-term rental and occupied by the owner.
Okay, so I guess that's the question, then. Is the intent, and now I understand what you're saying, is the intent to say, when it's being used as a short-term rental, no fireworks, full stop? Or if it's being used as a short-term rental, you can't use fireworks unless the owner is present?
The first one.
Kelly?
Ultimately, that's a council decision. So I would defer that to City Council.
Thank you.
So, just to clarify on that last kind of question. So any STR property cannot have any fireworks, whether or not the owner is present?
No, it, when it's being used as short-term rental, exactly how it's worded now, the fireworks shall be, no fireworks shall be used on the premises of a dwelling unit registered under the ordinance when it is occupied by anyone other than the owner, meaning when it's being used for short-term rental purposes. That is how I've always read that, and that, I believe that is how...
I agree with Kelly. I think that's completely a council decision. I understand Councilmember Hozie's point, though, regarding enforcement. Do you want to have the conversation of, well, the owner was here or not? In which case, we get the owner on the phone and say, were you there or not? So again, I think it's very much a council decision on what you want this to look like.
And I also believe, because the current code did not carry over some of the things that, the new code, excuse me, did not carry over some of the things that the current code has, which includes no parties, et cetera, in that list of items that are, in the list of items under 505, because those are the list of items upon which revocation is based. So it needs to be in that list, correct, in order to have a civil citation to count towards revocation?
Yes, yeah.
So I would include, because currently, we list all the ordinances that could result in a civil vocation, civil violation, citation. I would insert in a new pair, in a number seven, number eight, owners or operators or occupants are responsible for compliance with our local ordinances. We all know they are, but this provides the opportunity to have a civil infraction, which would count towards revocation, for those who have renters who do not comply with our ordinances. Because currently, all of those ordinances that are currently listed to allow for revocation have not carried over. So all of those items do not give us an opportunity to revoke a license.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is, if your licensee, or if your renter gets a citation for parking over the driveway, that's a violation of the code, which then qualify as a strike against the owner?
It could be. And also, if they have a party disturbing the peace, that could also go towards revocation.
This raises, it's a point where, you know, that can be discussed. But if I understand the council member correctly, what she's advocating for is that the property owner be held 100% respons- have their license on the line for any violation of a city ordinance that is done by an individual who happens to be, who'd be renting their short-term rental. And I have concern, now obviously, I think it depends on what, you could, we could get into the weeds on what violations we're gonna count towards a strike or not. But at the end of the day, that puts me in the position of saying, Your Honor, I understand that the rental owner here, whose license I've revoked, had a good neighbor guide, was responsive on Granicus, but happened to rent out to some unsavory characters, and they went and had a party. And I want you to hold him responsible for their actions.
Well, and the thing is, it is based off of the current revocation of registration that is in the code. On page 70 of 381 of our current code, that specifically says, determination of a responsibility or guilt by the owner, local agent, or any renter for a violation of one or more of the following would count towards warranting revocation. The noise ordinance, controlled substance ordinance, offense against public peace, solid waste. And so we currently have that, and that has all been stricken.
Yes, and, because again, my concern is, oh, I've rented to, I rented to some frat boys, and they had a party, and it got loud, and the cops got called, and I did, I was responsive on Granicus. I did everything I could. I told them they couldn't do that, and now my license is on the line. So if it's not obvious, I have, I have concerns about being able to take, to convince a judge that it's appropriate that a rental owner be held responsible in this way for activity that is largely outside of their authority, or their ability to control it. Again, we have the rules, and the issue with the parties was, well, what's a party? What isn't a party? What's a, is it okay to have a baby shower, but you can't have a baby shower if you have a tent outside? Is it okay to have a girls' get-together, but the minute it becomes a bachelorette party, and there's a sign out on the door, that's problematic? So the thought was to say, look, we already have a noise ordinance. We already have, and there's, and then if you're gonna have a, if you're gonna have a very large, loud party, you can get a waiver from the city manager to go do these things. So we're saying, if the short-term rental's ineligible for that waiver, and then you're, those individuals are just beholden to the noise ordinance like everybody else. And I do recognize, I think I have a typo when they're cited the same section twice, and D there. But that is my, that was my thought, was to say, look, we have ordinances that we should rely on, just like we're not creating additional, no short-term rental shall permit parking over the sidewalk. It's, well, we already have a parking ordinance. Let's just enforce what we got. Same thought on the noise. You already have a noise ordinance, let's just enforce what we got. Now, to the extent we want to preclude waivers in certain situations, okay, but at least we're still talking the same language as the rest of our code. Now, I didn't review your noise ordinance in depth, and that's something Kate and I have discussed, is kind of being next on the docket here, in terms of, okay, let's make sure our noise ordinance is up to snuff. But the logic, the train of logic holds, in terms of, we have a noise ordinance, let's use that as our screener, and we'll preclude them from getting waivers in this situation.
Can I just say one thing on that point? I understand what you're saying, and it's definitely worth, like, mulling over and processing, but, you know, when you talk about having a tent on the lawn, or a bachelorette party, or whatever, but it's not just a tent on the lawn, it's 20 tents on the lawn through the summer. Like, that's not keeping with the character of our neighborhood. So I don't want to normalize that if it's causing a problem to the neighbors. And I don't know how we go about that, or if that's just an enforcement issue. But I feel like highlighting that is important, because in the summer, it's turnover all the time, so it's not just one. So I just think being mindful of that is good.
Yes, sir.
It seems to me that if a person owns a business, and this is a commercial property, if they own a business, and they have an employee, or they have a subcontractor in their business doing something, they do something wrong, that owner is liable, as far as I know. I owned my own company for 25 years. I am liable even when my employees go to another company if they do something wrong. So I don't know why we would not make an owner of a short-term rental responsible for the actions of the renters. And I've heard short-term rental people come into City Council and talk to me privately, and talk about how strong and how vigilant they are in making sure their renters follow all the rules, and they take pride in that. So I think to make them accountable for that seems fair game, without trying to make this thing a legal nightmare. And if it does, that's a whole nother issue, then I don't want to do it. But other than that, I think Mary's right. We should hold them accountable.
If I can ask, what type of business do you operate?
What kind?
Yeah.
A manufacturer's repping business.
So if you have a customer that comes into your business and breaks the law, do you think you should be held responsible for that?
I didn't hire him, but people who have short-term rentals hired the short-term rental resident. They are taking money from them, they are coming into their business. If an outsider comes into my business and is paying to come in, which they're not, but my employees go out to them, yeah, I'm responsible for everything they do.
I would, I would challenge the conflation of a consumer slash customer with that of an employee. For example, if we use the supermarket context, because I think that'd be a little easier. Yes, Meyer is responsible for the actions of their cashier, their manager, their stock boy, and everything like that. But if I go in there and I start breaking the rules, Meyer isn't gonna be responsible for me. I'm paying Meyer, I'm a customer. And I think that, I think that gets at the difference between what's a customer and what's an employee. An employee, you know, there's a bunch, you know, depending on the context, there's a bunch of legal criteria, employee versus independent contractor. But one of those is control. An employer has control over the employee. A business very rarely has, I mean, they're not, they don't have control like an employee, but they have, often have very, very limited control over their customers. And I think that's the distinction.
Can I just say one thing before?
Then we're gonna adjourn.
I feel like, whether it's a long-term rental or a short-term rental, to allow the owner to not have any responsibility for, you know, bad behavior or violations, that doesn't feel right to me. I don't know legally, you know, where that stands. But I would just think if it's happening over and over again, it needs to be addressed. And to just say they are not responsible for who they rent to, I don't feel like that's fair to the neighbors.
Okay, we're adjourned at 6:45. You'll have another chance to make comments at our-